Before we get started with this episode, I wanted to share with you that earlier this year, we started doing more of our podcasts as video podcasts. All of our audio and video episodes are available on our YouTube page. We'd love it if you'd check it out. And please, while you're there, be sure to subscribe to our channel. This way, you get notified of new videos and new episodes that are posted. You can also find all of our videos on our website at mochinasfrontporch.com or by searching Mochina's Front Porch on YouTube. Matt and I hope you enjoy this episode, and please be sure to share our podcast with a friend. All right, Katie, thank you for joining me and sitting down to talk with me tonight. You decided to be a candidate for school board for 159, so I appreciate you taking the time to talk with me and kind of share with the community who you are and what's important to you and why you're running. So just to get started, you want to tell us a little bit about you and your family?
Sure. Well, how far do you want me to go back?
Whatever. Maybe you can tell us, you're married, kids?
I am, I am. So I've been married, I got married in 2010. I have two kids, Kalen and Jace. Kalen is in seventh grade and Jace is in fifth grade. I've lived in Mochina since 2010. Prior to that, I grew up in like a northwest suburb, Roseville. And I lived there with, you know, my mom and my dad. They were happily married. My dad passed away in 2008. I've got two siblings, I'm the baby, so if that tells you anything. So I have an older brother and an older sister. Went to public school my whole life. I ended up going to Eastern Illinois University and there I got my undergraduate in Recreation Administration. And I got a concentration in therapeutic recreation.
What was your thought when you got your degree? Like what, I don't know if that's what you went into or not, but what made you want to do that?
So, we could be here forever. As many college students go through, you know, what to do, it took a while for me to kind of figure out what I was going to do. But eventually, what happened was I had, I went there for teaching, you know, I was going to be some type of teacher, probably something to do with athletics, maybe gym, maybe be like a trainer. And then I had a class where I had to teach kids that were young. And I had a class then where we had to teach kids that had disabilities. And I loved the class with the kids with the disabilities. They were very appreciative of my time. And so from there, I looked into what I could do with people with disabilities. And that kind of led me to recreation and that concentration in therapeutic recreation, because that's really working with people with disabilities. It was kind of thinking I would do like OTPT type stuff with people with disabilities. But I got a job in college that was working with people with disabilities. And from there, I never left. And I stayed in that field up until 2019. And then I kind of took a break because my kids were in school and they needed some attention from me. So I decided to kind of reevaluate what I was doing, because at the time, I was putting in a lot of work, a lot of hours at my current job. And so I decided to kind of take a step back and ended up getting a job in foster care, like a year later. A friend of mine from the past kind of reemerged and asked if I wanted to take a look at where she was working. And I've been in that for about four years and it's been, it's been great. It's been very rewarding.
So maybe, can you just talk a little bit, I'm sure you can't go too deep, but what that involves and what you're doing with that?
Yeah. So I work for a foster care and adoption agency. And so we contract with DCFS. So I get to experience working with that agency. And a lot of what I do specifically is intake. And so a lot of what I have to do is read backgrounds on families and kids and kind of their stories and their trauma. And then I work with our foster families. So we have, you know, over 100 foster families that we have. And I work with matching the kids to families that could meet their needs. So I do a lot of assessments on kids that have gone through a lot of trauma, have a lot of mental health needs. And I just interview them and then work, you know, with the families to try to match them to a home.
Wow, that, you must see quite a range of experiences in that.
I do. Lots of stories I could tell, lots of stories.
Talk a little bit about how you ended up in Mochina.
So, it's a funny question. I was living in Midlothian. So after I graduated from college, where I was working at the time was out, like Joliet. And so I had to move, I grew up in Roseville, so I had to move a little bit closer to Joliet. So somehow I ended up in Midlothian. I think it was just probably closer to Joliet and that's what I could afford at the time. And I stayed there for a handful of years. And then my husband and I were living there and we, unfortunately, his mom passed away. And before she passed away, she had actually bought a piece of land in Mochina and she was going to build there. And so a couple of years after she had passed away, we got the land. His dad decided he wasn't going to live there anymore, you know, and he was going to go in a different direction. And so we took the opportunity to take, you know, to get the land from him and we built a house there.
Very nice.
I mean, I remember growing up, one of the things, when I lived in Roseville, like we, just playing high school sports and things like that, like it was always like Lincoln Way, like we got to beat Lincoln Way. There were always, there was always this reputation that they were so great. And so when we, you know, heard or decided that, you know, we were going to move here, I was like, the first thing I thought of was like, great schools. Like great schools, the great area couldn't, couldn't be happier. So that's kind of how, how we came here. It was not really planned, but it ended up working out.
That's great. What do you do for fun? Talk about recreation activities or?
Yeah, let's see. God, old people and fun. I don't, you know, I'm going to, it's not the popular thing to do, but I love to watch, stay home and binge watch shows on Netflix, of course. I do a lot of murder shows, you know, a lot of 2020 Dateline, I'm into the crime shows. I also, of course, love, you know, doing things with my kids. We do a lot of activities, whether it's, you know, sports, playing with them. We just got a puppy, so like playing with a dog, got a cat. And then, you know, I do what most people do to unwind, hang out with friends, go out, dinner. Where, I would say me and my husband are big foodies. We like to go around, try different restaurants, eat at different places. But I mean, that's kind of what you do when you get older, right? You just find places to eat and drink.
And eat and drink.
Yeah. Where are we going to eat and drink tonight? Yeah.
And your kids are very involved in sports, right? I know that we've met through that with, would be football and or baseball.
Yeah, well, pretty much my son plays baseball. He's a big baseball guy. And then my daughter is more of a theater and dance. So, which kind of segues into how this whole board thing came to be. She was going to, she goes to Street of Dreams. So she's done their theater program and she's done their dance program. And when she was going into middle school, she got super excited because the school had a theater program. So she's like, oh, I can finally do a play, you know, with the school and my friends, you know. Not that she doesn't have friends at Street of Dreams, but you know, this is the school, you know, friends. So a lot of people at Street of Dreams are from different schools and things like that. So, so she was excited that she was going to finally get to do that. And then, and then the Busine thing happened and it got put on hold, where there wasn't a director for the, for the theater program there. And my first involvement with the school board was after I found out there was no theater program. Or I don't even know if that's the right way to say it, but after pretty much, you know, that was put on hold because they didn't have a director. So prior to that, I was, you know, not involved, you know, with going to school board meetings or, you know, I kind of consider myself to be what most people probably do, is just kind of hanging in the background, like if there's not a problem, you know, I didn't need to go to the school for anything, you know. To my knowledge, my experience with the school has been great. My kids have had awesome teachers. I have never had any complaints. My kids do pretty well in school, so I'm fortunate. I feel like they're learning, you know, there's no issues there.
And when is the timeframe you're talking about? When did this happen with the theater program?
So this, oh god, she's in seventh grade, so sixth grade.
Last year or year before?
I think it was sixth grade. Right, so last year. So not that long ago. And then, so the theater thing happened and we were disappointed because she was really excited about that. And that's what kind of got me talking to other people about, you know, just the school in general and things going on in the school, school board, teachers. And so I started kind of going or watching some meetings. And then towards, well, it was probably the end of the year, then we got the email about the superintendent leaving. So after I had gone to Eastern, a couple of years later, like in my, after I had worked, where I was at after I graduated college, I ended up getting my master's at Lewis in leadership, organizational leadership. So a big part of what I do in my professional life is work on like organizational culture, working with teams, working with conflict management and communication. So a big part of my master's program was teaching me how to basically, you know, help businesses have a healthy workplace culture. And so when I saw the email about the superintendent leaving, you know, my leadership brain goes to, well, most of the time, people leave people. So we had this thing happen with a theater thing, this, this great woman teacher left, you know, and then we have a superintendent who leaves. So my brain is going, well, people leave people. So there's got to be some people issues, which I am very well versed in because I'm a big people person. All of my jobs have been with people. I mean, I've worked, you know, the job that I worked with before foster care for a very long time was with people with disabilities and mental illness. And so, I mean, like, like I said earlier, the stories of just the people I've met, the kinds of people I've worked with, the staff that I've, you know, led and supervised is, it all kind of came up in my brain when I was like, why are people leaving? Like something's going on. So the type of person I am, I just was talking to people and investigating and what's going on and are there's issues and things like that. And so that's kind of how I started getting involved, was the theater thing, then the superintendent thing, and then just gathering information, talking to people and hearing that, you know, there would be seats available on the school board. And so I was like, well, this seems kind of right up my alley for what I do in my professional life and I have time now. My kids are older, they don't need me as much, as much as that, you know, tears me to pieces. I have time for myself now. So, and I've always like advocated and worked for other people. And I thought, this is really a way I can work for my own kids. So, and my own community. I mean, I've been giving and giving to people for a very long time, you know, kind of outside and in my professional life. And I thought, well, this is a way I can give back to people directly in my care. So I was like, it's time to do something.
So looking at the issues that, you know, put you, you know, put you forward or made you decide you want to run, what do you think you bring to the board that would help resolve those issues?
Well, I think kind of like I just touched on, my, my background in the master's program that I took organizational leadership, I think has, would really put me above a lot of candidates because of that experience that I have with bringing people together. I think there's some disconnect going on. I think there's areas that can always be improved. Like I'm just a big proponent of like continuous improvement. Like we are great, but we could always be better. So what could we be doing to be better? And improving communication. So like one of the things I found out, like when you talk to people, right, like everybody's got their side of the story, right? And it's interesting to hear everybody's perspective. But then really bringing people together and working to solve problems together. It's not that, it's actually pretty difficult to get everybody on the same bus and following, you know, suit and like working together collaboratively. And I think that that's needed. I think our board needs that. I think that there, also, I think there's just time for change sometimes, you know. We reelect a president every four years, you know, because sometimes change is good. And I think just a fresh set of eyes coming in and looking at things is a good thing. A lot of times people are afraid of change, but I like it. And I know, I think that it brings forth growth and, so yeah, I think that I would bring that. I think I'm really good at communicating with people. I'm really good at conflict management, like critically thinking, seeing things from everybody's angle, all perspectives, I think is something that I'm really good at.
As far as communication goes, how do you, looking at what we as parents receive from the school, what do you think could be changed or improved as far as communication goes?
So I think that it would be great if we, if all three schools could get on board with the same type of communication. So I don't know how your experience has been, but I'll get emails, I'll get text messages, I'll get phone messages. There's a lot of communication coming in. I can't complain, I don't feel like people aren't communicating. Sometimes it's like, well, did that really need to be communicated 40 times as opposed to this, when I only got maybe one and I missed it? So I do think that we have improved in communication. I think it would be great if across the board, like there was a method or an app per se that everybody's using that, you know, is just like, this is how I know I'm going to get communication. So I'm like, I'm not waiting for a text or I'm not waiting for an email or, you know, the other, I don't think we're using a lot, many apps, or at least I'm not anymore. But before it was like, download this app for your classroom. And like, my kids would have different apps. And so it's just like a lot of different things. If we could streamline it and like come up with, you know, a way that we're going to communicate one, one way, I think that would be an improvement.
Okay. What do you see as some of the biggest challenges ahead for the school district?
In my opinion, the biggest challenge is that we don't have a superintendent. So I see that as a big challenge. We need leadership. And I think that, again, that's something that I really would want to be a part of. I would want to be a part of helping a new leader come in, helping that person to form relationships with people on the board, with, you know, administrators, with anybody. I would like to kind of be, be there to help in that situation because it really starts, you know, with the person at the top, which would be, you know, the superintendent. That's the person leading the school. And so right now, we don't, you know, we have somebody in the interim, but we don't have that leader who, you know, we know is staying. So I think that, that would really probably be one of the things that I think we need to focus on.
So as far as the superintendent goes, that is a process that, you know, they've gone through to start finding a new superintendent. And what is it that you, as both a parent, as well as, you know, a potential board member, is something that you would look for or think is important to see in a potential superintendent?
So I think that definitely some of the leadership qualities that I would want would be someone who is a good communicator, someone who is not afraid to hold people accountable, somebody who isn't afraid of conflict and who will communicate with parents and not so happy parents and school board members. And they'll kind of be the face, getting out into the community. So somebody who's going to be present, you know, and like known. I think somebody who is, well, I guess I would say like gritty or thick skinned, because being in that position, there's a lot that you have to deal with. And I could imagine it's, it could be tough at times, but I'd be looking for somebody who, you know, is loyal and, you know, at the first time of any issues or rumblings or conflicts, like somebody who's going to stick with us, you know, because this is a position that I feel like, you know, needs longevity. Somebody's got to stay here for the long haul. We can't keep going through every two years, every three years, you know, having somebody come in because that disrupts, you know, everything that's going on in the district. So I think somebody who's, you know, going to be loyal and, you know, really dedicate themselves to the position. So those are the things that kind of first come to mind.
As far as longevity in a candidate, that's something that has been an issue. Don White was here, I think, two years and then Dr. Cohen was just four years. Looking, you know, at that scenario, what do you think, you know, where is, do you have anything you could pinpoint as what you think the issues are? I guess we pointed, touched on a little bit, but, you know, I think it's important to figure out what the problem is if you're going to figure out how to avoid it in the future.
Right.
Is that anything you'd comment about?
I mean, yeah, I mean, a lot of times in, you know, in leadership, you have to do inventories. You got to find out, you know, why are people saying? You got to find out why people are leaving. So, I mean, I would think it would be important to do those inventories, you know, check in with the staff and the administration and find out, you know, what's going on? What are we doing good? What are people happy about? Why are people saying and why are they leaving? And kind of going back to what I said, people leave people, you know, especially coming from my background where I've worked in nonprofits, I mean, it's similar to kind of schools, I feel like. And so it's really important that there's trust amongst the people that are, you know, in the school district and they feel like, the teachers feel like they trust the administration and the administration trusts the board and, and, you know, all the way down. So I just think, I think a lot of it has to do with relationships, you know, and just people liking each other, liking working together, feeling respected, feeling heard. I think that's what it comes down to a lot of times.
Talk a little bit about how you see the role of a school board member as well as kind of what you expect the time commitment to be as a school board member?
So I see the role of the school board member being part of, you know, a team that kind of governs the administration. We would work obviously collaboratively, you know, with the administration. But, you know, I kind of see it as like, you know, overseeing, you know, and I think that the board is also there, obviously it's an elected position, so you have to keep in mind all of the stakeholders and all of the people you're there to represent. I think as a board member, I need to listen to everybody, you know, I need to listen to the administration, I need to listen and kind of have a pulse on, you know, how teachers feel about things, you know, how are, you know, how are parents feeling, you know, how are kids feeling, you know? So I think overall, like it's our job to have a pulse on what's going on in the district as a whole. But, you know, we're, we're there to help and to collaborate with, you know, the administration and kind of help them with what they might need to. But it's just kind of over, kind of overarching, overseeing those things.
How much do you direct involvement or maybe where do you think there are points where you as a board member would, you know, interject or have more, you know, think about areas like curriculum or, you know, dress code, all these different areas that school boards deal with? You know, as a school board member, you know, where do you think the roles kind of separate? Or, you know, where do you feel like it's appropriate to get involved or?
Well, I mean, I think that there's, you know, there's policies and procedures for everything. And so I think it's our job to, you know, make sure that we're aware of what the policies and procedures are. I personally don't feel like, you know, there's staff there to address those issues within the school. So I don't think that it's, you know, the board, the board's job to be in the schools dealing with, you know, issues on a daily basis. But I do think it's the board's job as a whole to listen to people and concerns and then talk about those things and find ways, you know, to find solutions if there's a major issue of something going on or if a policy needs to be changed or something needs to be looked at.
School board members have to make a lot of really important decisions. Talk a little bit about making decisions and the process that, you know, you would go through in making an important decision.
Well, I would probably do a lot of critical thinking, depending on whatever the topic is. I do a lot of information gathering. I like to talk to everybody. So as much as I can get information from the people that I can get it from, I would. You know, I would go to the experts for their advice, you know, if it is about curriculum. Well, who's in charge of our curriculum? Well, I would be talking to that person and getting their input or, you know, whatever the subject might be, you know, I think extracting information from people is number one. Once you have the information, I think then you start weighing pros and cons, you start, you know, taking it into consideration, different details. But really, again, like I like to approach, you know, situations by all angles and then really just weighing out, you know, strengths, opportunities, weaknesses. There's a SWOT analysis, you know, there's different things that you can do to make big decisions, you know, which, you know, I've obviously done at work numerous times in many different situations. So I feel like I would do similar, similar things in this situation as well. It's just, you know, you have to sit back and also I think, take time when you need to, take time to make a big decision. And then there's sometimes, you know, decisions need to be made quicker. And so you just have to figure out, you know, which ones that is, you know, what needs to take more time and what needs to be decided on, you know, at a faster pace. But again, I think working, you know, if you have, you know, seven, six, seven, eight other brains, you know, I feel like that's a great way to be able to do those things with other people's input. So yeah, I would do that.
For me, my tax bill, about 35% of it goes to the 159 school district. So talk about how can you, how will you assure people or how can the board and the district better assure people that their tax dollars are being wisely spent?
Yeah, that's a good question. I know that there is a strategic plan, you know, most agencies have strategic plans. So I know that there are things that, you know, the district carves out, you know, for potential things that could happen. And so obviously, you know, always keeping an eye on those things. And then, you know, when things come forward that, you know, come up that we need money for, different resources, I think we need to, you know, do our due diligence to investigate, you know, what it is that we need money for and, you know, follow our policies and procedures on how we go about doing that. And so, again, it's just kind of also making sure when we are going, maybe doing major projects, you know, that we're getting the right people for the job, you know, we're, you know, doing certain bids, we're doing research, you know, gathering all the information that we can to make sure that we are making the best possible decision that's fiscally responsible for our budget, you know, and for the taxpayers, you know, because I know that that's a concern for a lot of people is, you know, a lot of our money goes into the schools, which is one of the reasons why, you know, I think our schools are doing well. We have, you know, a lot of money going into the school district. And so I just think that, you know, carefully going through, working with the people that are in charge of our budget, you know, and, and going through those plans, you know, on, on a continual basis and evaluating, you know, what's the first priority and, and going through. what's the first priority and going through that. That's pretty much what I would say we need to do.
Something that every parent and teacher and everybody that works in a school, I'm sure, thinks about is security. What can we do, what can the board or the school do to ensure parents and all of us that our kids and teachers are safe at our schools?
So I think it starts with communication. I know that we are doing different drills and our kids are involved in safety drills for those reasons, which I do allow my kids to be a part of. I want them to be ready and feel safe for anything that could come up. But I think if there are situations that occur at the school, it kind of goes back to like how we get communication out to parents. Like if it's streamlined and there's one direct way, then I think I would feel better about knowing that my kids are safe at any given time. And then if there's different things that the community and teachers or people in the building feel like need to be looked at to make people feel safer, I think we need to listen to the teachers and listen to the people that are working in the buildings, listen to the kids. Again, just keeping a pulse on, do people feel safe with what's already in place or do we need to make adjustments and just go from there? But I, so far, I've been with the communication I've gotten. I've been pretty pleased with how our school has handled certain situations. So yeah, I think it's just listening to people and their concerns and then trying to problem solve around those.
What do you think is the best way to address differences of opinion or ideas between, both between board members and between a board member and, say, administration? Say you had a difference of opinion with a superintendent or in that, what do you think is the best way to address those differences?
Go to the person directly. Clear, crystal-clear communication, talking to that person. I mean, we're all adults. We've all had conflicts with each other. If we have a conflict and it's something that we don't think we can resolve in that moment, then you take some time and you regroup and you come back and you revisit it again. I think that, again, I think that's something that we, as a human race, I think, just needs to get better at. I mean, I am not afraid to kind of confront issues head-on. Like I'm the type of person who, if there's an issue, then I'm going to come to you and we're going to talk about it. I mean, I'm a social worker by trade, but I've been in numerous therapy trainings. So I feel like I'm really good at communicating with people. And so, I would just go to the person and I would get their perspective and I would let them hear mine out and I would hope that we could come to an agreement. I'm also not living in an alternate reality. I know that you can't make everybody happy at all times, but as a board member, I have to make decisions that are going to be best for everyone. And so, you can have a conflict with somebody and walk away and maybe not agree 100%, but everybody could still walk away feeling respected and heard. And sometimes, that's what we have to do as adults. We have to hear each other out and agree to disagree. But at the end of the day, if we have to make decisions about things, one way or another, we have to sit in a room until it's worked out.
So there are seven candidates running for the Mokina 159 school district. So just take a second and tell us why you are the best candidate or why people should vote for you on April 1st.
So I think you should vote for me because I am really focused on helping the district grow as far as leadership. So that is the one, I'd say that is my strength, again, kind of bringing it back to just being able to help the culture. I think I would bring that to the board. I think I would bring that to the district, just like I had previously said, like my past experience in working with people of various, different backgrounds, I think I'm really good at that. And so, I definitely think that we need that right now because of that leadership that we're lacking. I also think something that I do that a lot of people don't do, unfortunately, is just working in the mental health field. I take care of myself. I do a lot of self-care. And so, to me, that's another thing. If you're in a position where you're making tough decisions, you have to be well-rested, you have to be in a good state of mind. And so, I have no issues with taking care of myself. I go to a great gym called Spanga, which helps me clear my mind every day. I also think that I would bring, I think I would bring, I would help bring a voice to the teachers. I really think that we need to listen to our teachers and figure out what they need. I started off my career as what was called a direct support worker. And through my career, I worked all the way up to the administration. And so, I really know what it's like to be doing the work from the ground up. And I always wanted, when you're the one doing the job, the frontline staff, and then you have administration and people making what you think are like decisions for you, that can be frustrating. And so, I can recall being that direct service worker, and that is what made me want to continue to move up the ladder to be an administrator because I wanted to be able to make decisions and advocate for the people that are working on the front lines. And so, I would really be an advocate for the people that are in the school working. I would really want to get people more involved. I'd want to get the community more involved. There's not a giant attendance at board meetings. There's not a ton of people who are partaking in school activities. And I would do the minimal things too. I'll go to the school fundraiser and I'll go to certain things. So I myself was guilty of not being involved, but I feel like now that I've taken this interest, that I would love to get more community involvement. It's an important thing. And so, I think I would be a big advocate for just getting more people involved in things. I went to a fundraiser for the school and there was four people there. I mean, that kind of broke my heart. There was no board members were there. There weren't any teachers there. I would really like to be in a place, if we're having a fundraiser for the school, I would really like for there to be parents, teachers, board members, administrators. I would like for all of us to be there together. It was really sad.
You know, and it's interesting you say that because we just did an episode all about the wooden playscape that came down. And that was a fully PTA-driven project that raised $100,000 and gathered thousands of hours of community volunteerism. And we obviously don't have that now, and it's highlighted by things like that. Every organization goes through different times, but as a parent and a community member, those PTA organizations are extremely important. Just my two cents, but it goes to show that to have an active community involved, you can really do great things. But without it, it is difficult to do anything done.
For sure, for sure. And I was guilty of it myself, of not being involved, getting caught up. And every day, like I said, I was focused on career, home, everybody's okay. And I just think honestly, it's just, I think wisdom comes with age, right? I've learned, should I have done things sooner? Could I have gotten more involved? Absolutely. But I know that now and I can try to help other people see that. I try to help other people see other things they should do for themselves. So I would really want to get people more involved.
Talk a little bit, I'm sorry, but talk a little bit about kind of what you've learned in the process since you decided to run, what that's been like, having not run before, everything from petitions to community feedback.
Well, honestly, a lot of people have, I've kind of learned that this isn't that difficult, it's not that intimidating, that the people that are on the board are people like me, they're people like you. I think a lot of times, I don't know, maybe people underestimate, or like you said, like what's the time commitment? Am I going to have time for this? I believe that I do have the time now because I have some flexibility built into my life and so that has been a factor in that. So I get that people are busy and they have work and family and like, do I have time to go do this for the school? Do I have time to go do that? So I definitely understand that that's a big part of how people get involved. And so, I've learned that I do have time and that it's not that hard and that going out and getting some signatures wasn't that difficult. Filing, doing the petition thing was very easy. So sitting down and talking with you, it's not, you know...
Mostly painless.
Right. I mean, it's not rocket science. This isn't anything that is something that I think the average person couldn't do. It's just, I just am the type of person who will do it. Why, what are you running for? Why are you doing that? And I'm like, somebody's got to do it. Somebody has to do it. And so, I'm the type of person who will step up when somebody's got to do it. And it's been fun and it's gotten me out there. I've definitely gotten to meet new people. There's a whole group of parents who I've met who want to be heard. There's just a lot of people who I think want to be heard and they need somebody to help them with that. And so, I'm your girl for that. I mean, I have been advocating for people with special needs, disabilities, mental illness. I've been stepping up for them for years and years because they don't have a voice. And unfortunately, it's like that in our community right now. There's a lot of people who feel like they're not being heard, and so I want to help with that.
Talk a little bit about your understanding of that, the SPED program within 159. Do you feel it's sufficient? You think there's room for improvements? I don't say that I know a whole lot about it, so maybe you can let us know what you know.
Sure. So I don't know a whole lot either, to tell you the truth. What I do know, though, is working in the disability field for as long as I have, I could tell you right now that I'm sure it could be better. People with disabilities are always, unfortunately, the last to be thought about. A lot of their programs aren't the greatest. There's not a lot of funding and money for that. They always need more support. And so, I'm sure that if I went into the school and talked to teachers and paraprofessionals, they would have some feedback for us. I'm sure that there's probably improvements. I know talking to parents, they've had concerns over IEPs and different things that they have in place for their kids. And so, my stance is I'm sure that we can be doing better. I don't know enough about it to know what exactly that is, but I think one of the things that I would want to do is investigate more in that area, the special needs, as well as advanced learning because those are two hot topics that I've, in talking with people, those are the two main topics that have come up, right? Because the kids that are kind of just sitting pretty average, those are the folks that you don't really hear about. But the kids that need to be challenged more, they need some programming, and then the kids that need more support, how much more support do they need? So those are things that I think, if I were elected and got into the nitty-gritty and learned more, I think I would be happy to investigate.
So before we wrap up, just give you a minute. If there's anything else you want to share or you want to talk about, I don't know if you have social media or anything where you're sharing information, but just take a minute and you can talk.
I do not have any social media right now. I know as we move along further and I start to kind of beef up my campaign, there probably will be a page dedicated, so I will definitely try to get the word out about that. But for right now, I mean, it's just basically word of mouth. And then doing this interview with you, I hope gets the word out. Going to different functions, I hope we'll get the word out. But I'll have to figure out, this is the challenge, right? It's like, how do we get the word out so people hear about me and about what's going on at the school? It's definitely a challenge, but it's not impossible. There's so many different things now to be able to communicate with people, it's just getting it together. So to be, to come, to be continued, there will be social media to come. For right now, I mean, those of you that do know, I mean, I am on social media. So if anybody has questions for me, I'm more than happy. You can definitely DM me on Facebook or Instagram. And then I have set up a couple of times through different groups, the Mokina Moms page or the Parent page. Sometimes I'll put postings when I'm going to go have coffee if people want to come talk to me. I'm more than happy to talk to anybody, please. If there is something that you guys want to talk about that's related to the school, I'd be happy to sit down and talk about it.
Well, this is great, and this is what I hope these conversations would be, is getting to know who you are as a candidate and what you offer to the community should you be elected and not, because you're a member of the community as well. And I think you made a good point of, the people that are running are all, we're all just community members, we're neighbors, we're on the sidelines or whatever it is with each other. So appreciate you stepping up to run. It's not all, it's something, as you said, can be kind of a challenge to take that first step, but it is, can be a very rewarding thing. So when we have it, I'll share your social media or whatever you have. I'll put that on our website with the candidate information. And be sure to check out all of our candidate interviews on our YouTube channel and everything is on our website as well. Katie, thank you very much for meeting with you. I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.